Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the reorganization meeting on December 5th, 2022. Please rise for the pledge. All right. By way of attendance, all board members are present. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. So the action item is the reorganization, and now it's time for the public comment. The board will now take comments on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on this agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action.
Jim Malick, Warsester. I have a problem with the agenda. I gotta make public comment on something I don't really know about. I don't know who's gonna be nominated for president, vice president. How do I give public comment on something that I don't know about? Effectively, the way you have the agenda set up, you're actually inhibiting my public comment because I don't know who is gonna be nominated. So I'm gonna take a guess that it's gonna be Ms. Drummond for president, and I cannot support that decision, and I'm basing that on a lack of leadership. Now, are you familiar with Board Policy 901? Because you're on the Policy Committee. And after the last meeting, I observed, it's obvious to me that you really don't understand Board Policy 903. The reason that there's a time limit on people in the audience like myself is not to shut us down in the middle of a sentence, not to, you know, prevent us from completing our thoughts. It's to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to speak at the microphone, right? So at the last meeting, the room was empty. Three people were there, and you chose to strictly enforce the three-minute rule on somebody in the middle of a sentence, in the middle of an important issue. So to me, that disqualifies you from sitting up there. I think I was really, I was disgusted with what I saw last time. The other problem I had was she asked you for a clarification in the beginning, and she said, hey, can you stop the time, dah dah dah. You wouldn't listen to the clarification, you wouldn't acknowledge it, and you wouldn't stop the clock. It was so important to count her time down so she couldn't speak, you didn't even listen to her. And to me, I have a problem with that. Now, the other thing that was problematic was what went on with the individual's comments. And the comments were about a book that, in my opinion, was pornographic. Came up and read excerpts from the book about blowjobs, about hand jobs. And your solution is, thank you for your comment. That's it. No, hey, you know what? We'll look into it. Hey, I disagree with that. Let me ask you right here. Do you disagree with books in the library about giving hand jobs and blowjob? Can you at least tell the public that? Because if you can't, you're not fit to be president.[592.89][592.89][applause]
Any other comments from the public? All right. Seeing none. Thank you.
Amy Sorrello, Lower Providence. So I was glad to recently find out that as a superintendent, you are responsible for the selection, recommendation, and maintenance of all resource materials. So it ultimately falls on you that this book is gay is still available in the high school library after I read that filthy excerpt at the last meeting. In my opinion, it should have been pulled from the shelf until it could have been given a proper unbiased review. Furthermore, I wanted to let you know that I followed protocol for the reconsideration of materials as defined by School Board Policy 109. I contacted the librarian, who was supposed to discuss the instructional value of the resource, but she didn't. I was ignored.
Excuse me. Could you explain how this is related to this agenda item?
Why you shouldn't be president?
Okay, thank you.
I then added the principal to my email request, and eventually Zerby and Regina with no responses. According to Policy 109, not 139, as Regina incorrectly referenced at the last meeting, the building administrator should have sent me written communication to arrange a conference. That never happened because all 11 of my emails were ignored. Another parent in the district was lucky enough to get a response from Zerby. He provided a letter regarding library resources. The last paragraph of the letter says, "Providing library materials to support the delivery of an exceptional learning experience requires the understanding and assurance that the district has an appropriate process for reviewing library materials to educate and inform students." It seemed like there's a complete lack of a process, if you ask me. One other thing, you took almost half of my three minutes of public comment at the last meeting. You knew our discussion should not have been included in that three minutes, and you were wrong not to restart the clock. Just like the unanswered emails, it seems like that was a tactic to try to silence me. Ms. Perdue, you were out of line at the last meeting discussing the subject matter of my emails to you and the board. It seemed like you brought that up to let everyone know that I was one of the parents that was fighting the masks in our schools last year. Not very professional. Did you ever get the email that I sent you the night of the last meeting explaining why the board members weren't included in my emails regarding this book is gay? It's because I was following protocol. If you did receive that email and my follow-up email, you never responded. And Regina, to say that you've gone over protocol for reviewing library resources a number of times with me is a flat-out lie, and you know it. It seemed like you were also trying to make me out of some nuisance parent that needed things explained to me over and over again, like I was some dummy. Well, it took five months of me practically begging to ask you who approves the library resources, and until I spoke to you face-to-face at a school board meeting in March of 2022, you finally gave in. I won't be silenced, and I won't be villainized. I followed protocol from the beginning. The administration has not. Maybe now I can get an email response or a phone call from someone, because I'm not going anywhere until I do. Someone has to fight for what's right, and that's exactly what I'm gonna do.[772.45][772.45][applause]
Thank you. Any other public comments on this agenda item?
John Andrews, Lower Providence. Good evening. Again, I don't know who may be nominated to be board president or board vice president, but I think everyone should recognize that the present board president acts like a robot when it comes to courtesy of the floor. We're humans. We're not robots. As regards the library, I regard that as a classroom. So any books in the library qualify to be okayed or not okayed by the school board. So I consider the school board responsible for what books are in the library and what damage or what edification they provide. Thank you.[852.17][852.17][applause]
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you. All right. I will now take nominations for a temporary president to preside over the nomination and appointment of the president for a one-year term. Do I have any nominations for temporary president?
Yes, Ms. Kankrow.
Paul Winters.
All right. Do I have a second for Mr. Winters? Ms. Rocco, thank you. All right. Any questions or comments? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Nine zero. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Winters.
Okay, I will now take nominations for president for a one-year term. Do I have any nominations for president? Ms. Kankrow.
Elizabeth Drummond.
Do I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Okay. Do I have any other nominations for president? If seeing none, do I have a second for the nominee? I already did that. Sorry about that. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to say Liz has done a good job in her one year in office, and I really do feel consistency is important, and a second year is nice to have leadership in that year. And I don't want to do it now, but we probably do have to address some of the comments before this meeting ends. But I did want to say that I appreciate your leadership and would find the consistency for a second year important as we have some new board members.
Any other comments? Ms. Mark, Ms. Kankrow.
Yeah, I think that I felt that the leadership was, I guess, for lack of a better word, lacking a little bit in terms of transparency and communication to the entire board in this past year. So I'm hoping that if there is a reelection, that that could certainly just be improved upon.
Any other comments? Okay. I do, I don't need a road call when there's only one, right? That's correct. All in favor? All against? The nomination passes eight-one. The president is Liz Drummond. Congratulations.
Just want to say thank you for allowing me to serve another year, and I appreciate the votes of confidence. It is an honor. Thank you. All right. I will now take nominations for vice president for a one-year term. I would actually like to so move Ms. Kankrow. Can I get a second? Ms. Perdue? Thank you. Are there any other nominations for vice president? All right. Seeing none. Any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Carrie's nine zero. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Kankrow. Forward to another year working with you. All right. Now, courtesy of the floor, yeah. Now, it's time for courtesy of the floor, an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and you can also submit questions via email to information@methactin.org.
Before we get started on that, I was wondering if we're gonna read or address any of the comments from before. I think it's important, and I apologize to the staff from Warsester. I know we have important business to do, but I also, if the people that already spoke are welcome to come and speak again. So I feel like we need, as a district, to explain to people, and we probably should have done it at the last meeting, but I think we were kind of taken back by the content, but we have a system in place for books. That's very important to our students. Are we ready to read that or not?
Well, one thing I would like to just ask.
Yeah, if I could, if I could just make a recommend, if I could just make a recommendation to the board, we can, we can address any of the matters I think is most appropriate at this time that we move on to public comment, I'm sorry, on courtesy of the floor, and then after hearing any additional comments, we can address all the matters that you may want to address.
That's fine.
Would you like me to wait till everybody gets the handout? Jim Malick, Warsester again. I noticed the methactin balloon on the rise. Well, seems like that's the only thing on the rise. There's an article in the, I think it's the Inquirer, about are kids behind three takeaways from PA's latest standardized test scores? Any guys read that article at all? Because in that article, methactin has the great distinction of having their test scores drop from 2019 by 26%. 26%. That's what should be talked about up there. That's what should be talked about. And it's not. Everything but that's being talked about. Now, my opinion is, the reason we have this dramatic drop in test scores is because of the way you guys managed COVID. Masks, social distancing, lockdown, virtual learning, and it's been shown that they will all negatively impact students, and they did. And you have the scores to show it. But nobody says, hey, you know what? We have a problem. We need to explore this and figure out a way to get these kids back on track. Instead, you know, we're knocking down an autobahn. We're building a planetarium. Everything but the important, and I don't have a kid in the district, but I care about kids alive. And nothing. And this is what I'm talking about, leadership. There's no leadership. That's the problem. So you need to come up with a plan to, first of all, deal with how you mismanage COVID, okay? That can never happen again. Lockdowns, virtual learning can never happen again. And then you have to say, okay, what are we gonna do about the test scores? Because you could have used all that $700,000 grant the other night that you're gonna spend on a planetarium to help the kids out. But no, that's not what you want to do. So that's my two suggestions. Now, the second document I gave you was from Dr. Zerby's propaganda talk on competitive attractiveness. Now, he was bragging about your index, right, being 1.9%, 1.1%, 1.5%, but it's really 1 point whatever percent of what number. When you're talking 1.98% of $109 million, that's $2.1 million. So Dave, what you should have done, rather than confuse the public with, oh, it's only 1%, you should have put the numbers down at the bottom for us to see. 2 million, 1, 2, 1.7, 1.5, 1.4, right? So then the public understands how much money you guys are spending. So that's my suggestion for your next presentation. Thanks.
Good evening again. John Andrews, Lower Providence. Yesterday's Inquirer had an article on test scores. Test scores in southeast Pennsylvania, the PSSA scores from last spring, just the math test scores, along with a list of some of the worst drops in the public school charter schools and some of the private schools. Looking just the public school large drops, Eagleville was number two, Arrowhead was number 24, Arcola number 27. By comparison to those over 20% drops at Eagleville and Arrowhead, in nearby Springford, four of their grade one to four schools showed gains. So there's something different going on. I'm hoping that analysis done to explain what happened both here and at Springford. We should put extra teaching effort into helping our young students in the math area. I agree with Dr. Malick saying that putting the money into a total redo of the planetarium doesn't help these students who are behind, and we need to help them catch up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Erin Rineery. I am from Lower Providence. I've also been teaching math in the district for over 20 years, and I share the concerns that the last two gentlemen had. Sorry if these questions were better suited for the education committee, but I have not been able to make any of those meetings. And honestly, I think I'd like all of you to be aware. So I'm here today to ask where the push is coming from to change and/or get rid of midterms and finals. Is it from the Department of Ed, from certain parents, from the school board, or from certain members of the administration? Regardless of where the push is coming from, do you, the school board, agree with the push to get rid of these exams? Do you think it will make our students stronger? Do you think it will make these test scores stronger? Is this part of methactin on the rise? For those listening that don't know, pre-COVID, we always gave midterms and finals at the high school and even some classes at our Cola, those that which we determined were high school-level courses that they were taking at younger grades. For the first 18 years of me teaching here, those grades were listed as separate grades on the report card, and each of them counted for 10% of these students' final averages. This year, the midterms and finals will not be listed as separate grades, but rather they will be just grades within the second and the fourth quarters. They are not to be more than 15% of these quarters. This has recently been decreased. I think we were discussing at one point possibly being 30% of those quarters. Again, who is making these decisions and why? Believe me, I'm grateful that we are having them at all, but going from about 20% of their final average to 7.5% is a drastic difference. Where is the research that shows that these summative assessments are no longer important? What surrounding districts are doing this? I'd love to see data from other schools, but the ones that are high-performing that are around us, not just any schools. In my opinion, students' grades are already more inflated than they used to be. COVID decisions put us way behind, but decisions like these are gonna extend our issues. I don't think that we have ever had this many children who qualified to take regular geometry this year, but yet they are retaking the Algebra I keystones in a few days. That should be concerning. I think the biggest thing for me is that the discrepancy between their actual grades, their final averages in Algebra I, and the test scores this year are more drastic than ever. I think we used to see more of a direct relationship between their final averages in that course and what they are scoring on the Keystone exams. I'd like to meet with somebody possibly and talk more about this. I have been involved in discussions in the past year about what to do with midterms and finals. I have made my point very clear. I think summative assessments are important. They always have been. We have looked for years at making our test scores, you know, more meaningful and having DOK level three and level four questions and not just level one and level two. I still have time left. I'm watching it.
It's three minutes. So thank you.
So thank you for your comments.
Oh, right. Sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Trun Ling Ma from Warsetler Township. Good evening. I'm the mother of four children, and I have a current middle school student at our Cola. I fully agree with Ms. Rineery regarding the importance of keeping midterms and finals at the high school level, as well as for some of the honor classes at the middle school. I recently became aware through a parent teacher conference of the elimination of midterm and final at our Cola. Despite the fact that honors math class are at a high school level, and some math teachers at our Cola did freely give midterms and finals before the pandemic. After talking to the our Cola principal in the curriculum office, I found out it was the our Cola principal who gave the directives to the teacher not give any midterms and finals anymore in our Cola. I'd like to ask, based on what kind of data decision was made? Had the teachers been consulted before the decision? They're the ones who know what's the best for the students. On the contrary, research has shown that midterms and final not only provide an opportunity for students to showcase their understanding of the coursework, but also is an effective way of helping students to learn. In fact, students need to have midterm and finals that account toward their overall grades. Many STEM courses such as math are accumulative and synthetic knowledge. They need to be tested as a whole in addition to just individual chapter tests. Midterms and finals prepare the students for a better understanding of the entire subject. They also get students to practice for the future accumulative and comprehensive tests such as Keystone SAT, ACT, or perhaps our electrician or plumbing certification test someday. We talk about enhancing math and STEM education. How can we do so by eliminating midterms and finals in STEM courses? I heard people talk about no test and no stress for the kids, but I got another saying for you: no pain, no gain. What is the best way to set our kids up for success? Life is full of stress at different stages. How are we to prepare our kids for high school, college, and life if we don't start building their study skills, resiliency, and perhaps even disappointment from bad grade early in life? If we remove the challenges in life for them, how do we expect them to grow? We would be negligent by doing so. Coddling our kids will hurt them eventually. I believe one way to help build their resilience is through the accumulative and comprehensive testing. I'm here therefore requesting the board and administration to allow teachers to teach how they feel, how they see fit, and add back midterms and finals. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for courtesy of the floor, please?
Hi, good evening. Katie Theo, Lower Providence. I just have two things that I wanted to share based on what I heard tonight. And the first is about the planetarium, which I would know was already decided, but there actually is some research out there that could actually support the keeping of and supporting of the planetarium. Background knowledge of all content areas is really, really important for students to be successful and to understand. And if we want to support student knowledge of space and STEM and make sure all students have experiences that allow them to understand texts about space and prepare them for STEM, the planetarium helps to build that background knowledge and create an even playing field for all of that. So I want to thank you for that decision you made at the last board meeting because it supports their literacy in STEM and being able to read those texts. So thank you so much. The other thing that I just want to speak to real quick is I heard that some people have seen the PSSA results, and I'm sure you have. I haven't seen them yet. If they did go down, I want to encourage you to go back to paper and pencil next year. The brain does not necessarily read online the same way that it reads paper and pencil, especially if the students have learned to read by paper and pencil. So it may be a really easy way to see how much learning loss was because of the switch to online. I know it's an improved way. I teach at a cyber charter school, and I'm here saying that to you because we deploy all over the state and give it on paper and pencil. When you do it online, you're fighting the student's desire to go quickly and scroll like on Snapchat, on Instagram. So that deep reading that you need them to do, it's harder to do the endurance. They can learn to read, and they can learn the endurance to read like that, but it takes time, and it takes a very specific type of thing that researchers are still studying to figure out. So I do this research. The research is by Mary Ann Wolf. Her book is called Reader Come Home. She's also read Puss in the Squid, which is about how the brain rewires when it learns to read. It is supported by the science of reading as well. I just wanted to share that just because I've read the book, and this is an area of research that I do. Thank you so much for all that you do, and I hope you have a good night.
Thank you. Any other comments for this agenda for courtesy of the floor? All right, seeing none. Board comments. Ms. Rock?
Yeah, I do have some comments because I, and I apologize, I forget which member of the community brought up the Keystone exam, and then these children or students are now in geometry, and they didn't pass Keystone. I myself was, I had a few folks reach out to me. I do not have kids in this district, but I've lived in this district my entire life. I can tell you that my child would have been one of those, in that group of that Keystone group. And I can tell you that while she did receive a 99 average for her year of algebra, honors algebra in eighth grade, when she went to take her math placement exam at her new school, she was told to repeat honors Algebra I. So I tell you that, not to bring my children into this, but I tell you that to give you the example that students that had received grades of not only passing grades but passing with high scores of other children I know who are in 10th grade here were told that they did not pass the Keystone exam. And parents were reaching out to me more as friends to say, I can't believe this. My child has to retake the exam. I did reach out to Dr. Zerby. I also talked to another board member. I know Dr. Zerby is planning on presenting some data around the Keystone results in January. It was a higher number than what was expected. I am concerned because that is a foundation, that Algebra I is a foundation for future math. We go from Algebra to geometry, back to Algebra II. So I care about the students in this district. That is why I reached out, because I was very concerned about the number of students that did not pass that exam. And these were kids who did very well in Algebra in eighth grade. So there is a disconnect. A lot of that year was virtual learning, so I question what was the true content of what was learned. Now we're playing catch-up. That is part of this PSSA drop, I'm sure, is playing catch-up. We added the math coaching positions, which we were doing the right thing to do that. But I did at a meeting say I wanted to see data on how the math of, the math results were going to be evaluated. You know, were they increasing? Because that's why we added these positions. I know they added the extra online help last year into this year. I know students are using it, but it is a very big concern of mine because I truly care about the students in this district. The other thing that was mentioned by another community member was the paper pencil and, you know, the switch online. And I'm sure that that could be part of it. I do want to say that the SAT is moving to full digital too. So the class of 2025 will be the first group. They just took their PSSAs on paper. Their SAT, not PSSA, PSAT is on paper. Their SAT will be digital. So we do need to start also helping students prepare for other electronic assessments. So I just wanted to tell you, I hear you. I hear from members of the community. I care. I am concerned. I think that comments on, you know, spending planetarium money on what should have been math, I think that we can do both. I think we improve our STEM and our overall student by showing them the wonderful tools we have in our planetarium. But STEM, a big part of STEM is math, and I am very concerned that that full grasp of it and that foundation is lacking, and we are playing catch-up. And if we are, I want to, I just want to see the results and make sure that they are improving. So that's all I want to say.
Other comments from the board? Just if our solicitor could kindly just talk about the time limit and enforcing that equitably across all speakers and the risk that the district is in if we don't do that?
Sure, I'm happy to. So there were some comments made about enforcement of the policy regarding public comment. And from a legal standpoint, having a policy on public comment is important, but just as important as having the policy is consistent implementation of the policy. Because if you have a policy and you're not implementing it with fidelity, then there's really no purpose to have a policy in the first place, and it becomes very hard to defend the enforcement of it when you haven't had a history of implementing it that way. So in order to treat all members of the public fairly, to give everyone an opportunity to be heard, it's very appropriate and legally recommended to have a timeline and to follow the timeline consistently regardless of the number of folks that may wish to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members?
I'm not going to comment too much because there's a lot to unpack here, and some of it is very valuable. But I want to move on for the Warsetler people. I would like to know as a district, when are we going to read that statement about books? When are we going to read that? Is this the time? Are we going to send it to the people? Are we going to put it on the website? Because I want people have concerns, and they need to know where, what, where the district stands. I'm happy to read it now. I just pulled it up on my phone.
I haven't.
Okay, would you like to read it?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Would you like me to read them?
Sure. The only other thing I'll say, just quickly, I think some of the comments were valuable this evening, and I would be happy to talk to anybody about them. I would say, I would, I'm sure Ms. Rineery has reached out to the curriculum supervisors and her principal. A lot of this was discussed at education. It doesn't mean it can't be discussed again. There is always a concern in education, and I understand it when we say things like always have been done. And it is hard for change. I know I've been an educator for 20 years, and it is sometimes hard to change, and there is usually good reason for it. And there is usually heartache from teachers. We have things we hold on to that we love, right? But there is also reasons why things don't always, always being done the way they've always been done. We learn, grow, and evolve.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. And just to add to that last part of your comment, I mean, it's not just about whether we continue to do things that we've always done. It's determining what we should do to best support students in the mission of the district. And as such, for a number of years, we've been instituting UDL, or Understanding by Design, to help deliver instruction in a multi-mode and multi-fashion. We've also, as a result of the comments through this evening and your discussion at the education committee meetings, you know that we're also providing alternate opportunities for students to demonstrate their knowledge. So as we differentiate our instruction, we're differentiating the assessment. And this is, this is by far the most appropriate mechanism forward. Is it a change? And is it concerning for some? It's a change, and it may be concerning for some. But I can tell you, this is the right path forward. With that said, I'll move on to library resources. The Board of School Directors, the administration, and the staff of the Mathacton School District are focused on providing students with an exceptional learning experience. To that end, the Board of School Directors, the administration, and our staff believe that library resources are an important and integral part of the learning experience. The value of the learning experience is continued upon the quality, variety, types, subjects, and in representation of viewpoints on problems and issues of our times internationally, nationally, and locally. As such, the superintendent approves purchases, purchase recommendations from the professionally trained instructional staff and building principles annually for library resources within the approved policy and annual budget. The superintendent has established procedures for which the professionally trained instructional staff are designated to determine in consultation with the principals the recommended purchase of library materials. Material requests come from the staff as part of their curricular needs and from student interests, as well as recommendations from the American Library Association, Publishers Weekly, PA State Library Association, Horn Book Magazine, Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, and the School Library Journal. Given the determination made by the professionally trained staff under the adherence to the administrative guidelines and the school board policy pertaining to the selection of library materials, the board does recognize the right of an individual parent or guardian to request that their children not receive or not review certain materials. Therefore, the board makes available for inspection the listing of resource materials online. If a parent guardian determines that they do not wish their child to have access to a particular library material, they may request, under Policy 109, a reconsideration of the material review for their own children. To assist the parent guardian to better understand our policy and processes, I refer a link here for the Policy 109 and the administrative guideline for which our staff follow in the selection of that process. And lastly, as a school community, our collective work together in support of all students is critical. Providing library materials to support the delivery of an exceptional learning experience requires the understanding and assurance that the district has an appropriate process for reviewing library materials. To educate and inform students, and when the parent guardian concern arises, we address that together on a case-by-case basis. This will be posted on the district website along with the links to the policy and the administrative regulations. So in essence, it's important that we recognize that our need to educate and provide access for knowledge and information as determined by the professionally trained staff. Secondly, as you recognize as a board, as so our policy does dictate, the opportunity for parents who may not necessarily agree with being able to have their child access those resources, to recommend that those not be made available to their children. And we will take whatever steps are necessary to make sure that we adhere to the parent's request. But we don't take requests from parents removing materials for other students. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from board members at this time for this meeting? All right. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Mr. McGinnis, may I have a second for that? Ms. Cancro? This meeting is adjourned now. Oh, thank you. All right. All right. Now, I'd like to call to order the December 5, 2022, Mathacton School District Regular Board Meeting. Dr. Zerby will introduce our student who will lead the pledge. Dr. Zerby?
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, please join Warsetler Elementary School student Spencer Demmett for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, I'm Spencer from 4th grade at Warsetler. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Spencer. Well done. Next, we have Savannah McClure to tell us why she loves Warsetler Elementary School. Please see the screen.
Hi, my name is Savannah, and I'm in 4th grade at Warsetler Elementary, and I'm here to tell you why I love my school. The teachers are nice, and there are activities like Fun Day, Field Day, Fall Harvest, and more. I am in chorus and orchestra, and I like it. It's good that the school has stuff for kids to do, and I hope that more students to come will like it too.
Well done, Savannah, and well done, Spencer. Thank you so much. Madam President?
All right. Thank you. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, all board members are in attendance. And now it's recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerby?
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have Warsetler Elementary School Principal Ms. Amici here to make some very important announcements in the announcements of Staff of Excellence Award. So Ms. Jumman, if you'll join me out front, we'll listen to Ms. Amici make these announcements.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am excited to be here this evening to recognize seven amazing individuals who serve in a variety of roles at Warsetler. First, I would like to recognize Dana Hyman. Dana is a caring 4th grade teacher. like to recognize Dana Hyman. Dana is a caring 4th grade teacher who goes above and beyond to make sure her students feel valued and loved within her classroom. She is extremely reflective and is often fine-tuning her teaching to strengthen student engagement and choice. She is currently co-teaching with a special education teacher in an inclusive classroom and has embraced this new model of instruction. Dana has been serving on our district's social and emotional connections team. She is appreciated for the time that she has dedicated towards this important initiative. Dana is loved by the entire Worcester community, students, parents, and staff. Thank you for all that you do. Next, I would like to recognize Nadine Selecky. Nadine is an energetic 2nd grade teacher who is always looking for new ways to engage her students. Nadine was one of the original Mets Connect teachers years ago when iPads were first introduced to Mathacton. Additionally, she was trained in the use of Mentor Texts and has helped many teachers across the district with how to use Mentor Texts to teach reading, writing, and grammar. Recently, Nadine volunteered to co-sponsor an after-school computer club, which is valued by the school community. Nadine is famous for fun phrases that she often uses with her students, such as "you're on track for success" and "let's keep it moving." Nadine is a pleasure to work with, and we appreciate her upbeat attitude. Next, I'd like to recognize Cindy Kirchner. Cindy is a 1st grade teacher and a valuable member of the 1st grade team district-wide. As a former reading specialist, Cindy has a strong background in reading, which serves her students, who are budding readers. Curriculum is a passion of Cindy's, and she often serves on curriculum committees to help write and revise curricula. This year, in addition to serving as a math pilot teacher, she also volunteered to host a Gwinnett Mercy College student through the Mathacton Teacher Apprentice Program. Cindy is very reflective, and we appreciate her ideas and insight. Worcester is lucky to have her as a Worcester Wolf. Next, I would like to recognize Dorothy, or Dot Monkovic. Dot is a valued instructional assistant at Worcester, and anybody that knows Dot knows that she is one of the most kind and energetic people you'll ever meet. Dot is willing to lend a hand to any student or staff member. She loves to stay busy and will do anything it takes to help support teachers in their work. Dot is especially good at cheering students up, and I'm convinced she can make anyone stay better just by being there. Worcester appreciates Dot's enthusiasm and commitment to our school community. Next, I'd like to recognize Lisa Oliveri, who is an instructional aide. She was formerly a personal care assistant and recently moved into the role of an instructional assistant. This transition was seamless for her, as she is always willing to help any student or teacher. Lisa always goes the extra mile for the students at Worcester and is always willing to help our school in any way. She embodies a team spirit and always has a can-do attitude. Lisa is often the first person to say, "Let's help," and that ultimately creates a positive ripple.
So please consider hiring a plumber that is up to the task. Thank you.
Jim Malik, Worcester. I'm going to talk about the item on the agenda that deals with the pool. I think it's in fiscal nine. KCBA architects, again. KCBA for Audubon. KCBA for Planetarium. KCBA for Arrowhead. KCBA for a pool. Is there something I'm missing? I mean, do we have like a contract that KCBA has to do all of our work? Was it put out for bids? Because I found out that the Planetarium, there was only, there was an RFP put out, and no responses. So how do people get picked that way? Maybe you can explain that to me. Is there any competitive bidding going on for this work? Or is this the KCBA show? I mean, they hit the motherload here. They hit the motherload. See, it's a shame. You know, I'm getting a little older, just had a birthday, and I can see what's going to happen and do nothing about it. Because what's going to happen, KCBA is going to look it over, this is my opinion. They're going to look it over and tell you, "It's not worth your time, trouble, and effort to fix the pool." They're going to tell you that they should, you should move the pool, and you know what? Let's spend a little more money. Let's do a new auditorium. I think this is the auditorium you're going to replace. This is what's going to, I know it's going to happen. Because Dave Yu, at the property committee meeting, were talking about filling the pool in with dirt, moving it, and building a new auditorium. So what happens, this is how it works, KCBA gets involved, right? And all of a sudden, they seem to come up with the exact same plan that's expoused to us. Now, how does that work? Somebody explain it to me. We're going to fill in, this is my opinion, I don't know for sure, but we got the superintendent talking about filling a pool in, instead of going back and saying, "We fixed that pool," what was it, eight years ago? Repaired it? Well, why didn't the analysis happen eight years ago? And we save $300,000 to $500,000 from fixing it and do it back then. So this is the kind of thinking that you guys have to adopt. Because now, new pool, new auditorium, and then what? Then new high school? And then we'll tear that down? Something's not right here. So maybe you can explain it to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more public comment on board action items this evening? All right, seeing none. Next, moving on to the board meeting minutes. This is a motion to approve the November 15 work session and November 22 regular board meeting minutes as attached. May I have a motion to approve? Ms. Cancro, may I have a second? Mr. McGinnis, any questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Nine zero, thank you. All right, next is fiscal items. Mr. Booker.
I am, Madam President. Tonight, for your approval, we have the two motions under the high school pool assessment. The first one, to approve KCBA and more engineering as the architect and engineer for the pool assessment at $4,740. The second one is to approve Weston and Sampson engineers to provide an audit and technical review of the current Mathacton School District's pools facilities at a cost of $6,800. We also have budgetary transfers. This is to approve the business office to complete the budgetary transfers in accordance with the recommendations of the auditors. Once completed, a full report will be provided to the board and will be reflected in the final audit.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal items as presented? Mr. Winters, may I have a second? Mr. McGinnis, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Reese?
Just one quick one. The Weston and Sampson engineers, does that cost include travel? Because I noticed they were from Boston. I would assume it does. I just wanted to make sure.
I don't.
Oh, it might.
I don't, I don't think so. Because it says plus eligible expenses. I would imagine not.
Okay. And I ask that only because those are reasonable costs for both of those things. So that's why I made notice to really read it carefully. Okay, and that's fair enough. I mean, it's important. So I just wanted to ask, because I did notice they were an outside-the-state company, and I understand why they are.
That's their corporate headquarters. They also have, in their letterhead, you see their state offices.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cancro?
Can you just briefly explain the fiscal items, then, of the pool assessment?
So there are two recommendations on this pool. First of all, recently, probably within the last 20 days or 30 days, the facilities director made me aware that there's significant amount of leaking occurring. In addition to that, there was an inspection done by the Department of, Department of Safety, and they had concerns about the ceiling in the pool. As a result of that, and as a result of other photographs that we shared with the property committee at the November 2022 Property Committee meeting, it was my recommendation that we get a thorough review by an aquatics engineer as well as an architect to determine what the feasibility and need is to put the pool back into working order condition and ensure that it's in safe working order condition. So with that said, the committee at the time agreed that we should move forward with that. And we are moving forward at the rate of speed as fast as we can, given the response from contractors, et cetera. And it just so happened that we received this, most of this material on Friday. It made only sense to bring it before the board here this evening, rather than to, you know, move it into emergency response. So with that said, KCBA, who we've done, had a relationship, as the gentleman mentioned at the podium, for quite some time, and that relationship has been a good quality relationship in terms of when we first brought them on as an architect, we went through an extensive bidding process to find an architect to help us with the Arrowhead project. And as a result of that, and that relationship, and that trust relationship, knowing that a service, a professional service like this, is not required to be bid, even though we did bid the service originally, it is important that we have the ability, from time to time, when emergencies do occur, that we go out and we consult with the engineers and the architects, so that we can respond appropriately and timely on matters of great concern. In my opinion, this is a matter of great concern. It's something that we need their support on immediately. If I were to go out and do a, an RFP, or go through a bidding process for an architect, and every matter that needs to be reviewed, our delay in getting some of that work done will be significant. And so it's my recommendation that if the board or the property committee so chooses at a future meeting, that we ought to put out, forbid, architectural services and engineering services. Again, we certainly can do that, but we don't want to do that in a critical time where we need immediate service. So it's something we certainly consider in the future, and the administration would be prepared to do that. This is not one of those times.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments about these matters? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Craft.
I just wanted to clarify, what is the difference between number one and number two? Can you just break those apart for us to give a little more clarity there?
So the first one, KCBA is looking, will be doing the inspections on the pool deck, the interior finishes, including the wall, ceiling, and the lighting, as well as the mechanical, electrical, plumbing equipment serving the pool, and code compliance and line of safety issues, among a couple other items. In terms of the second item, which is the Western Sampson group, they will be doing the following. They will be looking at the current conditions, reviewing the facility for, again, for code audit, determining the pool, if the pool can be repaired, rehabilitated or replaced, and providing information on the report for and providing information on the, the report for, for what's called a master report. If desired to provide the, the cost estimates for the rehabilitation of the pool. And then also coordinate with K C B A on the, on the lines of, of potential upgrades related to the health requirements.
All right, any other questions? Comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor of these fiscal items? Any opposed? Carrie's nine zero, thank you. Personnel?
Thank you, Madam President. We have a few items for the board's consideration this evening. They seem to be all in supplemental contracts and classified substitute list. Under supplemental contracts, we have an item for room movement, G I P writing, the fall coaches extended season pay, homework club sponsorship, mentors, the seventh grade boys' basketball coach, the spring head softball coach, and the assistant softball coach. We also have one item for classified substitute, that's Rosemary Brewer as a casual long call. Thank you.
All right, thank you, may I have a motion to approve all personnel items as presented? Mr. Ruckstall?
Thank you, I may have a second? Ms. Rocco, thank you. Any questions or comments on personnel? Ms. Perdue?
I just have a few. Can you explain briefly the homework club at Skyview?
Yeah, this is a, a club that we've had before in other levels. It's an after-school club for students to be able to be there and get work done after school. There's an activity sponsor that does that after school as well, so that's the sponsorship.
Is that only at Skyview?
We did have it in other levels, but I, I'd have to double check that for sure, what other levels have it.
Okay. And I do have one more. I see, I think it's seven, there's all, seven the mentor, and I, there was another one also. Can you just briefly provide an overview of that role?
Yeah, the, the mentors are for new hires that we, we have come into the district. So if we have anybody that we're hiring at the mid semester, or if we have an individual going out on leave that was a mentor and we need a replacement, mentors will come in about mid-year.
That's it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on personnel? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Nine zero, thank you. All right, now, I don't see anything under curriculums and programs. Policy?
Thank you, Madam President. We do have a few items for second read. Specifically, one that has the greatest amount of change would be 916, the volunteer policy, which was, has some modifications to it specific to classifications of volunteers and the recent TB test and some of the requirements of 10 hours of a direct student contact per week being something that is required in order to have to get a TB test. So we'll be going over that a little bit more fully in the January board meeting, but that would be the policy as the greatest number of provisions. Thank you.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve the six policies for second read? Ms. Perdue, may I have a second? Mr. McGinnis? Thank you, any questions or comments about any of these policies for second read? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Nine zero, thank you. All right. Now, other, Dr. Zerbi?
Thank you, Madam President. There are two trips on the agenda for your approval. They approved the high school wrestling team, a trip to Conestoga Valley for a two-day wrestling tournament, tournament on December 29th. Then also to approve the Methacran High School indoor track team, a trip to Ocean Breeze Sports Complex, Staten Island, New York for December 18th. And then under transportation, we asked for the approval of the following drivers as listed. And then we asked for you to approve the board meeting schedule as presented. And then under 13E, again, based on our presentation at the voting meeting in November, I presented the information. I also provided to the board a track changes version of the contract amendment. But just to refresh your memory, it is to approve the, the amendment to the collective bargaining agreement between the Methacran School District and Methacran Education Support Professionals dated July 1 through 2121 through June 30th through 2025 in accordance with the attachment chat presented, our presentation. Remember, this is to address the staff shortages that not only did we see with our professional staff, but also with instructional aides and, and other support staff. And by the numbers, we talked about 34 being the, the challenge that we experienced this past summer with 18 instructional aides, eight personal care assistants, and then additional eight instructional aides that we tried to hire. And some for the rate of, of somewhere in the neighborhood of $13 to $14 an hour, which in, in many instances, because of the sub starting rate that, that we, we have in, in those positions, it was very difficult, as you can imagine, to hire some folks. So what this amendment generally does, as you recall from the presentation, it gets rid of the sub starting rate, which means that if, if this, if the chart says $16 an hour or $18 an hour, that's what the starting employee will start at, not at 85% of that rate. And then the second thing is, it provides a 50 cent increase this year, and then it puts everyone on the right scale based on the, the modification of the scale. And those, and those scales changes were listed in the presentation. And lastly, it adds a, a position called A8, which is between a PCA and an instructional aide, but it's, it's generally entitled and is a, a monitoring assistant. So with that said, if, if this agreement is approved this evening in January, you will see the job description up for approval, and likely you will see some names of individuals to be approved for that position. Are there any questions on any of the, the amended contract matters? I just want to take that, oh, I'll, I'll let you do that, and then we'll, we'll come to that. And then the last item that I have i- is a settlement agreements. There's two for a settlement agreement and release for student number 301406 with special language of the terms for the settlement agreement approved by the district solicitor. And the second one is approve the settlement agreement and release for student 340428 with special language of terms of the settlement agreement approved by the district solicitor. And that ends other.
All right, thank you. We did receive advance notice of an abstention from 13E, so we're going to take that separately. So may I have a motion to approve items 13A, B, C, D, and F, please? Ms. Reese, and may I have a second? Ms. Graff, thank you. Any questions or comments about those items? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, nine zero, thank you. All right, now 13E, this is the contract amendment. May I have a motion to approve that item? Ms. Reese, and a second? Ms. Perdue? Any? Yes?
Yep. This written memo is submitted to the Methacran School District Board Secretary in accordance with Section 1103J and the Public, Pennsylvania Public Official and Employee Ethics Act, also known as the Ethics Act, 65 PACS and 1103J. At the public meeting that will be held tonight, it is my intention to abstain from the vote on an agenda item 13E, which involves the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Methacran School District and Methacran Education Support Professional Association due to a conflict of interest under the Ethics Act. The nature of my interests is as follows. My wife is an instructional aide at the high school, Methacran High School, and will have her hourly rate increased related to this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, are there any other questions or comments on item 13E? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Winters, 801, thank you. All right. So dates for board members' calendars, the 2023 approved board meeting dates will be added to the website for reference. Our next scheduled meeting will be the education committee meeting on January 3rd, 2023. Now, old or new business? Anyone have anything? All right. Time for courtesy of the floor and opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. Please keep your minute, comments to three minutes or less. The board of school directors may choose to respond to matters, and you can submit questions via email at information@methacran.org.
I apologize, real quick, I just wanted to remind everyone to please RSVP to the North Monco holiday dinner. And if you are free that evening, I would really suggest going. The students do a phenomenal job. And it is one little perk of this volunteer job, it is a lovely dinner. And it's one of my favorite events of the year. So if you are free, no pressure, I know it's nice, December's a little quiet, but hope to see you there.
I agree, that, that date is Monday, December 19th.
That it. Jim Malik Warseth. Mr. Solicitor, respectfully, I think you need to do a little research in your comments about board policy 903. Did you realize that it was recently revised in February of 2022? Did you know that? Do you know why it was revised? Because it was illegal. That's why. Pensbury School District case, you know that case, right? Okay? We don't need a lecture from you about something that I don't think you know completely about. Okay? As far as the speech, free speech requirements and everything else, Ms. Drummond, if I'm not mistaken, has the discretion to extend public comment. So, you know, I don't know what you're talking about, but she has done it with Mr. Earnshaw, she has done it with Mr. Andrews. So either she's correct in using her discretion, or she's violating the law. So maybe you can figure out which one it is and let me know. As far as the $700,000 grant goes that was used for the planetarium, that money was specifically earmarked COVID money to be used for students, student education. There are no studies that show a planetarium does, enhances that in any way. There are studies that show that virtual reality goggles do, and that's why tons of other school districts use them at maybe 90% less cost to the district. So, I don't know why you would take 700 grand that you could use for kids struggling in math, whether you provide more tutors, whether you provide more classroom help, and use it on something that has not been proven in any way, shape, or form to enhance education. Please, I, I'll say it again, provide me the studies that show that that's the case. There are none, I looked for them. That's why only, I think, 30 school districts in the state have a planetarium. If it was that good, everybody would have one. Now, as far as the pool goes, so I understand, now we have an emergency with the pool, right? So for like a month or two, it's been leaking, but now it's an emergency which justifies overriding the bidding process, the competitive bidding process. Is that what I just heard? Is that really it? I'm skeptical, okay? My concern is, roughly eight years ago, if I remember correctly, that pool was repaired for a leak problem or some kind of an issue. Did anybody, do we get a warranty on it when they repaired it? Do we know what that is? Was it explored? Did anybody go back to the people who fixed the pool and said, hey, we got a problem? Think you need to look at that, thank you.
Any other comments on courtesy of the floor?
Hi, everybody, can you hear me? Okay, there we go, no, better? Okay. Hi, Gina Stover, Lower Providence, I just have one quick question. In regards to the pool, just to have a logistical question, what is happening with the pool in the meantime? While we're doing the process of getting these quotes for the pool? I know the high school, I think they believe the swim team, the MAC, and community ed, they actually use it every day. Just what's the protocol and are they still allowed to use it? That's it. Thanks.
Hi, Erin Menery, Lower Providence. I just wanted to comment about, well, first of all, let me apologize, I forgot about the change to three minutes. I think the last time I spoke it was four minutes, and I apologize. I think a, a point was brought up about change, and I agree, sometimes change is necessary. I mean, we've changed a lot over the past few years. I think it would, if it was working, I would feel differently. I think not having midterms and finals last year hurt us. I think if things are not changing, such as SATs, ACTs, Keystone exams, P S S A exams, if those things aren't going away, and we had stuff in place that worked for several years, it's not that I'm opposed to change, but is that change really helping? Or is, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to project-based learning, but if you're throwing that in at midterm time, and you're not doing that throughout the entire first semester of the year, how is that fair to us to come up with a project for six math chapters when I'm not doing it for unit tests? How is that helping us on ACT scores, SAT scores? It's not. If those high-stake tests aren't going away, then why are we getting rid of ours? In preparing students to go to take a midterm and a final, there is a lot of material that is spiraled back in and revisiting of material that we say, okay, we had a hard time with this. This was our toughest chapter. Let's spend most of our time reviewing this, this, and this. I think that is important. And if it means nothing, if it's worth such a small percentage of their grade, they're not going to care to study for it and revisit it with me. They're just not, they know, they're high school kids. They get it, they know how much of a decrease is going to be in their final average. So I ask you this. If those other high-stake tests are not going away, can we please consider to keep ours? Until those changes happen, why are we making these changes? Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments for courtesy of the floor tonight?
Good evening, Kelly Mann, Lower Providence. I just wanted to come stop by, I had emailed regarding some content that was found in the library that was explicit, and I received an email back, it took two weeks. And it was a policy that was very vague. And I wanted to know further how this is going to be handled. I don't look at this as just a book that sits on the library shelf. I look at it as a reflection of the morals and the respect that is happening at the school district, and it is extremely disappointing. Not just someone that comes here to complain, I'm involved in home and school, I volunteer in the school district. I will have three kids in this district, as of next year, I have two right now. And I don't like what I'm seeing and where this is headed, so I would please like some answers. I'd like to know where each of you stand on this. I want to see someone be a leader about this, thank you.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor?
Chunling Ma, Warseth Township. Just want to touch upon two things. First is the K C B A thing. We hire, we're hiring them for the study, right? So are we going to hire them for, for the architecture design, like what, what we did for Arrowhead? If we do, wouldn't that be a conflict of interest? If we shop for something at home, like we want to install something, we probably get two companies for a quote. Then we compare which one is, is more realistic. So if we hire a K C B A to do the study, maybe on the condition they wouldn't do the job for us. Otherwise, they would say, oh, of course you need this job, then they get, they get next job done, and they, they can make more money, right? It's just common sense. Second, I also want to comment on the pornography books I found in, in Skyview and also in Arcola. I don't, I'm, I don't even want to read the content, it just, it's so embarrassing for me to read it here. And, and there are a lot of, I sent Dr. Zerbi and some, and also I see every board member. And there are a lot of, I sent Dr. Zerbi and also I see every board member, all the content there, they have this screenshots of the book. And then, I heard Dr. Zerbi read all this, you know, I don't know how, where you came up, came up with this from your solicitor or what. Like, we don't remove the books from libraries. It's up to the parents to tell the students not to read the book. I just think it's against common sense. If we don't allow kids to watch PG thirteen movie in Arcola for twelve years old, how can you just freely expose them to such sexually explicit content in the school library? They're free to get them. The parents may not know. The student already borrowed those books. At least, we should have set some, like a grade, like a rating system. Like I said, this is PG thirteen books, so the students know they have to get a parent approval to get it. I don't know. I'm very disappointed with all you read just now, all this policy. It's just like saying a lot, not saying anything by saying a lot of things. I don't know. This is, I think this is challenging people's integrity. To me, it's already beyond the limit of a person's integrity to expose kids to pornography. Yeah, just, I think this is wrong, and those books can be available in the local library, not in the school library. Thank you.
Any other speakers for courtesy of the floor?
There's a step stool here for short people. Hi, Amy Smith, Warsester Township. I just want to say thank you to the board for featuring Warsester this evening. That is the school that I'm right there with Mrs. Kankrow. We're in our thirteenth year straight at Warsester, and the staff is amazing. So I just want to say thank you for what you do every month, acknowledging the teachers and the schools. And just a special shout out to Warsester for all that the amazing team there does on the regular. I just wanted to comment about the books at Arcola, Skyview, all of the schools. I appreciate that educators are permitted to do their jobs and to select books with content that is appropriate for the students. I understand that not everybody wants to read the same kind of books. There's a whole group of moms out there that read Colleen Hoover, and I think it's total trash. I would never read those books. But that doesn't mean that I'm going to judge people, right, for their choices of reading. I think that educators and parents should be in dialogue about what is appropriate for their child and what isn't. I think that's really important to how we parent and how the rest of our village, which includes the school, helps with selection. I know with students who are advanced readers, it is hard to find appropriate content. We're always judging that and juggling that in our house as well. So I do understand why people might be concerned. But I also think that if you're cherry picking content out of a book, you're missing the bigger story, right? I mean, a book takes, on average, six to seven hours to read. There's a reason why the author put whatever they put in that book, and it could be for specific reasons. So I just want to say thank you for not pulling books off the shelves without a review process. I appreciate that as a parent, I can call in and say I have concerns about a book, just like any other parent can. I can say that I don't want my child to have access to certain content. I think that's great, as long as we keep the communication going, because it does vary from household to household. And I don't want anybody else seeing what my children can and can't read, especially when it's something to be selected. It's not required reading. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
Hi, good evening again. Katie Theo, Lower Providence. I just want to talk real quick about the statements that were made about books in our library. I think our libraries are a strength of our district. And I appreciate the statement that was read before, explaining the school district's policy about books in the library, and parents' right to talk with the district and make books available or not available for their children, but keeping access to books for all students. And I don't say this lightly. I'm a teacher. I am aware of books and some things that students may have access to and what they might not have access to. But the truth is, when you're preparing students for college and career and the world, there are uncomfortable topics regardless. And when I think about books and stories and texts that I read that prepared me for my career, The Canterbury Tales, The Odyssey, I mean, it was in Old English, so the students had to work a little harder to understand it. But there's a lot of uncomfortable topics there, too. And I think my students, my children, because I have three in the district, deserve access to that when they're ready, and I trust my teachers and I trust the Methacton teachers for using their professional knowledge and their training to know how to cover those topics with my students. And so I appreciate the district protecting access and also allowing parents to communicate, because I do think parents should have that ability. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor tonight? Seeing none. Any final comments from board members? Ms. Rocco?
I know you read the information, Dr. Zerbi, and I appreciate that. I just, as a follow-up to that, and it was a lot of information, and I know we were able to review it as well. But can you just clarify something I'm curious about? If a parent and student express, or if a parent expresses concern over what their child can and can't read, I'm just wondering what onus and/or responsibility that puts on the teacher, and I'm afraid of causing more stress. Will it be tracked? Will they just not be able to check it out? Like, will there be a flag in the electronic checkout? I just, that's my only follow-up question, is that I do understand it is up to the individual parent to be able to make those requests, but how exactly will that be tracked? If you can maybe just allude to that a little?
I think that actually works differently in different libraries. So let me get that information together for the members of the board and provide that, yep.
Ms. Perdue?
I know there were a few topics brought up today. I just wanted to ask a question about the pool, just because I think this is just coming up. There were a few questions about the pool, and I don't know if we have that information. If not, we can follow up, but there was a question about what is happening on the pool and the current protocol now. There was a little comment brought up about the pool was repaired eight years ago. And do we look into that, or do we reach out to the vendor? Was there any, I guess, any protection from the work that was done, or maybe do you have an update on that?
Yeah, so to answer to both of those questions, in the meantime, the pool is going to be made available. We have no, again, I'm not saying this is an emergency. If this was an emergency, and I thought that there was a life safety matter here, the pool would be closed. You would have been notified. This would not have come before you. I would have taken the action. What I'm telling you is that this is a definite challenge that we need to address, you know, more rapidly than just waiting for a normal process. So to answer the question, the pool will continue to be made available, as is, and we will make a determination once we receive these evaluations back. Based on the evaluations, we may have to make a different determination. I don't know. I can't foresee what that result will be. In terms of looking at previous workmanship, certainly, the workmanship can be reviewed once we review what all the issues that we have. So if craftsmanship was done eight years ago, we would say, hey, that work needs to be redone, or is it under warranty or some respects to that? But right now, we're looking at a more comprehensive approach to the leaking that's occurring, the ceiling matters, the way the pool in itself is just operated, from the HVAC to getting, and this is getting a little technical, but the gas that comes off the top of the pool, how is that being, you know, siphoned off? And there's all sorts of things that, it's been told to me that our pool doesn't do that it should do. And so I want to know that, so that when I say to the board, while it's safe to do X, Y, and Z, we could provide a better environment or a more reasonable environment and our students as they participate in phys ed class in the pool.
And then, just a quick follow-up on that. When do we expect to have a timeline for the assessment to be completed?
I believe they're going to be able to start work on Wednesday for doing the assessment. I don't have an answer on when they'll be completed, but I can get that and provide that to you.
And I do have a comment or question in reference to the books. I know a lot of comments, we received a lot of comments today about books in the library and about the procedure. I would like us to maybe look into this a little bit more, and I don't know if you have information. I know you said you'll come back, just because I know at the different levels, there's different things that is in place in the library as far as what books students can check out. I think it's the same process, I want to say, maybe even at the public library, where when I sign my kids up for library cards, there's, you know, I can put a thing on there if I want to restrict the material they have access to. That was a long time ago, but I don't know, but I would like us to provide that to parents, just if there is something at the Cato Four level and maybe at the Arcola, Skyview level, what that is, what it entails, and how that process goes through, and how parents know what they have at their disposal. Because I know our library spans a big range when we think about the selection, when we go from kindergarten all the way to the high school level. But I think if there are valid, I believe there are valid concerns, and I do want us to, or challenge you to bring it back to parents as far as what information is available when it comes to what their kids can take out.
I can tell you that there's a couple additional things that we want to add to the overall piece. And one of them, as Ms. Rocco mentioned this evening, is that, like, how is that managed within each library? And we may decide that it's easier for us to have one system to manage all of that, or we may just outline how it's done individually by each library, because there may be some nuances that, you know, we can't just easily consolidate into one simple system. But with that said, again, if there's any other things that you would like us to consider as we're going through some of that, you certainly can, you know, give me a call. I'm glad to include that in our conversations, because part of what we need to do is have conversations with the principals and the librarians about getting the details on that.
Okay. And I do have one more. I know Ms. Erin Munieri is still here, and I do appreciate her for taking the time to attend our meeting. I know it's Monday night, and she probably has a million or one things to do in reference to serving as a teacher in our district. I do think she brought up some topics, and I know she mentioned her first previous comments that if, you know, we can reach out to her, and I just want to know who will follow up with her from the administration, or how do we follow up with her, just because she seemed like she has some input that she want to provide.
Her building principal will be following up with her.
And that's it for me. I do have one comment. I do know it was referred to by a member of the public in reference to me discussing emails. I did not disclose anything personal. I just disclosed that I haven't received that email. And I do plan to reach out to that member of the public tonight, just because I still check my email. I don't have anything. So whether they're sending emails to a different email address, I do have an email address, and I will send her my Methacton email address, and she can reach out to me. She's also attended many of our committee meetings, and I believe we'll be in touch.
Thank you. Any other comments, wrap-up comments? Mr. McGinnis?
Dr. Zerbi, if you could just possibly put some of those pictures of the pool in the memo, so everyone on the board can see it and see how stark they are. I think it'll give better insight as to what we're dealing with in the pool.
Will do. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Motion to adjourn? Mr. McGinnis, the second. Ms. Rocco, thank you so much. Meeting adjourned.